I'd like to call the October 26th Board Meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees to order. If you'd all please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome everyone. We now move to roll call in recognition of visitors.
Okay, this evening's visitors include Dick Carter, Kate Racelin, Janine Matthews, Lynn McLinnon, Judy Nogal, Paul Snyder, Roberta Everslaj, and Linda Maskel.
Great. We do have a handful of visitors for open forums. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, which I don't see. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. We do have a handful of people, so please limit your comments to five minutes, but I won't restrict further than that. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department and not before the board. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues, or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance processes or are otherwise the subject of review by the college or the board. The first speaker I would invite to the podium is Brenda Edmonds.
I'm sorry, I have a cold, so I'm glad there's a microphone. Hello, my name is Brenda Edmonds. I'm a math professor here at JCCC in my 23rd year here at the college teaching math. While at JCCC, I also helped to found the Office of Outcomes Assessment, which has now become the Office of Assessment, Evaluation, and Institutional Outcomes with Dr. Lori Slaven in 2010. As co-directors of that office, Lori and I worked with both faculty and administrators across the college to address items related to outcomes assessment, everyone's favorite issue, that were listed as outstanding opportunities in the college's last AQUIP Systems Portfolio Feedback Report. This experience helped me to better understand the challenges faced by administrators at JCCC, but it also helped me to see that any decision made at a college-wide level can have many consequences. And it helped me to understand the importance of engaging stakeholders in conversations to be sure those consequences are considered, understood as clearly as possible, and addressed in a way that mitigates concerns while also fulfilling requirements of the college's external stakeholders. I'm here today to speak specifically about the Cabinet's recent decision to remove any prerequisites for enrollment in College Now Math and Science courses. As I begin to speak specifically on this issue, I would like to quote Dr. Sobchak in an email that went out on Info List on October 12th. He said, "We are a community college, and I will always advocate for students, especially those who live with great adversity to be able to experience all the benefits that a college degree, be it from a university or community college, can provide. That's why I'm here too, to advocate for students." I'm concerned that Cabinet has made an arbitrary hasty decision about a situation they did not fully understand without investigation of appropriate data, relevant policies, possible consequences of their decision, and alternative solutions. I'm also concerned that the email message from Dr. Sobchak about this decision gave as a rationale for the decision factors such as parents' conversations with him, challenges faced by local high schools, declining enrollment, and competition from other colleges. There was no mention of the use of appropriate data, consideration of possible consequences of the action, engagement with those involved in the affected academic programs, or discussion of alternative solutions. The only mention of relevant policies was this, we feel confident after discussing this with our institutional research and assessment staff, who are very familiar with the HLC and their processes, that considering the nature of and numerous factors that played into this decision, our accreditation will not be at risk. As someone that worked with HLC and spent a lot of time reading HLC documents, I would say that's 100% true. College will not lose its accreditation over one violation of HLC policies without being given the opportunity to correct course. If the bar for appropriate decision-making is whether or not we will lose accreditation, that is the wrong standard. We are an institution of higher education, and while as a community college, we are about access and affordability, we are also about quality. This compromise of academic quality is, to quote, summarize Jenna Sarjo in an email from the Faculty Association, "not a viable solution to decreases in enrollment or parent pressure. It is also not acceptable to accept nearly $500 of tuition money per class from a student that is not prepared to take that class. It is not acceptable to ask a high school teacher to make a decision about possibly giving a low grade to that student that is just beginning to build his or her college transcript. It is also not acceptable for that high school teacher to feel sorry for that student and give that student a passing grade when he or she hasn't learned the course content at a passing level. It is not acceptable for us to allow that student to transfer that credit that may have been granted under questionable circumstances to a university where it satisfies a degree requirement. It is not acceptable to let that student walk into a Calculus II class at KU with their Calculus I credit earned via a compromised process at JCCC, and that student has no chance of success in the $2,000 Calculus II class they're taking at KU. That student in that class at KU has wasted money and time, and he or she is now going to take a hit on GPA and chances of earning that engineering degree when they fail or drop that class at KU through no fault of their own. I want to advocate for that student." I would say that this kind of decision-making seems to be a trend at JCCC. Is that my time? Okay. Our AQUIP report mentioned things about not using data in informed decision-making and problems with communication vertically at the college, and I would say that this is a clear indication of that. I would ask that the board please request that there are policies put in place to avoid things happening like this in the future. Thank you.
Melanie Harvey.
Hello. My name's Melanie Harvey, and I'm a professor of chemistry here at Johnson County Community College. One of our strategic goals at Johnson County includes increasing student success by improving retention. In General Chemistry I and College Physics I, we require students to demonstrate college reading readiness and that they be ready to enroll in college algebra. It is commonly accepted, and I'm sure you would all agree, that both chemistry and physics are relatively challenging courses. As faculty, we work very hard to make sure that as many students as possible are successful in our courses. We do this without lowering our standards in any way because we take our job of preparing students to transfer very seriously. We pride ourselves in having a reputation for being academically rigorous while continuing to be accessible to as many as possible in our community. We have these math prerequisites in place to make sure students are set up to have the greatest chance of being successful in our courses as possible. Most students that are not successful in chemistry and physics struggle to apply mathematics to the scientific problems. I'm very concerned that this decision to immediately lower our academic standards was seen as a reasonable solution to a decrease in enrollment or to pressure from community partners. I'm a parent of a high school student currently enrolled in Algebra II, so I've given a lot of thought to this from other directions. The reality is that the students that didn't place into these courses were not able to demonstrate that they had the math skills necessary to take these courses. They did not answer the math questions correctly. I'm concerned about the environment that's created for high school teachers teaching our courses to students that are not prepared with the added pressure from parents to award passing grades for high school courses. I'm concerned about the more advanced students that are going to suffer by not being challenged to the level that they deserve because they're in a class with underprepared students. Finally, we as faculty are tasked with the responsibility of curriculum and establishing academic standards for the institution. The reality is that the faculty that worked to set these scores and policies based on their expertise were not included in the decision-making process. One of the AQUIP categories for accreditation is Category III, Valuing Employees. This action shows a disappointing level of disrespect for faculty and the contributions that they make to this college.
Thank you, Dr. Harvey. Next, Matthew Schmier.
Hello, my name is Matthew Schmier, and I am a professor of English here at the college. Unfortunately, I do not need my glasses to read. I'm the opposite of many people. I serve as the Chair of the English and Journalism Curriculum Committee. I also am Chair of the English Department Curriculum Committee. I'm an Educational Affairs Committee representative for my division. I'm a at-large faculty senator, and I'm proud to say I've been a Faculty Association member since my first day working here at the college. But I don't want to talk to you about my expertise in those areas. I want to address you today as a parent, as a parent of a College Now student. Our daughter is currently enrolled in a College Now math course through her high school. Like many of our high school partners, the way College Now works at her school fits the needs of that school. In some cases, it's a special section that's only for college credit. In other places, students are allowed to sit in that course because they've met the high school requirements for the course, but they also must meet the JCCC requirements in order to earn college credit for that course. We love College Now. My daughter has earned almost 30 hours of credit through our College Now offerings. It's a benefit to our students, it's a benefit to the schools, it's a benefit to the community. However, in this case, with this decision that the executive cabinet made, we have sullied the good name of College Now. My daughter earned the right to take that math course. She earned it through her hard work, through satisfying the prerequisites that have been put in place by our college faculty for the college credit, and so did every single one of her classmates who worked hard and placed there by the same methods. But because some administrator made the decision to waive these placement scores, many students who did not earn the right to take these courses for college credit are now able to take them. And that devalues what we offer as a college. Put yourself in the place of my daughter. You worked hard. You studied hard. You did the work. And now there's someone sitting next to you who skates by, who doesn't really care, who is sitting there in that class because they met the high school requirement, but now they can earn college credit for the exact same course that you worked hard to get the college credit What are we telling our students about the value of hard work and about the value of earning college credit, or even the value of a degree, when we waive our standards simply because they are too inconvenient? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmier. Donna Helgeson.
Good afternoon. My name is Donna Helgeson. I'm a math professor here at JCCC. I've been here since 1999. I was adjunct for 11 years, and I've been full-time. This is my seventh year. I recently volunteered to be the College Now Liaison for Math 181 Statistics. This is one of the courses affected by the President's Cabinet's recent decision to remove the requirement of demonstration of any standards for College Now high school students to earn in these four JCCC math classes. These classes are Math 173 Precalculus, Math 181 Statistics, Math 241 Engineering, sometimes called Calculus I, Math 242 Calculus II. As a member also of the Math Department Placement and Assessment Committee, I am very discouraged that the meticulous and tremendous work that went into setting these Accuplacer scores was completely disregarded. As a liaison, I am very concerned for my high school partners teaching as adjuncts in these College Now classes. What if that teacher needs to assign a grade below a C to a student who should have never been in the class in the first place because the student does not have the prerequisite skills necessary to be successful in the course? Our own administration eliminated any placement criteria this semester by, in my opinion, caving in to pressure from high school parents and administrators. How is a high school teacher supposed to stand up to this same pressure at the end of their College Now course next May when he or she needs to assign an earned D or an earned F to a student's JCCC college now course, I'm sorry, to their JCCC college transcript? These teachers will be under enormous pressure, and the pressure will be just as strong for them as it was for the JCCC administration. Should the teacher inflate the student's grade to avoid any backlash from the student's parents and perhaps from their own administrator, or should he or she assign the grade that was earned? If the teacher decides to assign the low grade that is earned, the backlash that he or she will encounter will probably be quite severe. Our administration's decision to rescind any placement criteria has placed these high school partners in a very precarious position when it comes time to assign grades in these courses next year. Secondly, as a liaison, how can I deliver the message to my college high school partners that JCCC does not view College Now high school students and their parents as deserving of special treatment that is also afforded to our native students on this campus? The message was delivered through this decision by the President's Cabinet and that, yes, College Now students are deserving of special treatment. JCCC students on this campus do still have to earn the determined placement score to take what has been deemed to be an equivalent course taken here on this campus. One of the versions of the email that was sent out to all College Now students and instructors in the wake of this decision very much implied that the Math Department's Placement and Assessment Committee, of which I am a member, messed up when we very meticulously and carefully worked to set the Accuplacer cut scores. I would argue that we did not mess up when we set those cut scores. That had been previously documented by my mathematics chair of the department at various other college-wide meetings that have already occurred prior to tonight's meeting. So in conclusion, I am very concerned that our College Now math students' first impression of JCCC and of the college, and of college in general, is that, one, the college does not have their act together and had not figured out appropriate placement processes, and, two, every policy at JCCC and maybe every college is now negotiable. A very dangerous impression has been set from this hasty decision by the President's Cabinet. I am part of a concerned group of math faculty on this campus who have already met several times in the wake of this decision. We are now going to be spending many, many hours meeting and planning our next steps forward to try to mediate what has happened here in hopes of backing up our College Now high school teachers, as well as working to maintain academic standards in these College Now courses. This is time that I now will not have to spend with my own students in my own classes during this school year. I beg the board, as my colleague did, to please put policies in place to keep this from happening again.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Jeanette Funero.
Students, faculty, staff, administrators, and board members, I am addressing you today as the Vice President of the Faculty Senate. At its meeting one week ago, the Faculty Senate passed overwhelmingly a resolution regarding the Executive Cabinet's decision to suspend College Now math placement scores. The resolution was sent to all members of the Executive Cabinet, to all members of the Board of Trustees, and to all faculty members. I would like to summarize that resolution for you here. In its resolution, the Senate recognized that when the Executive Cabinet made the decision to suspend placement scores to allow College Now students to enroll in some math, chemistry, and physics classes, the Cabinet did so without consulting with faculty on what is one of the central roles of the faculty, namely to develop all aspects of the curriculum, including measuring student readiness through placement scores, prerequisite determinations, and course sequencing. This action by the Cabinet subverted the faculty-led curriculum process. It violated K-BoR policies, HLC guidelines, NASAP standards, and best practice guidelines regarding the academic rigor of dual-credit courses. The Executive Cabinet placed community relationships and public perception ahead of faculty-led processes that ensure that fair and accurate measurements and methods are used to gauge student readiness. This action undermined the authority and expertise of subject area faculty. The Senate recognized further that the Executive Cabinet's action on this matter is just one of many decisions affecting faculty that have bypassed or ignored faculty consultation. This action set a dangerous precedent in which mutually agreed-upon policies and processes of the college can be suspended, changed, or amended based solely on public outcry. The decision bears serious consequences, including the loss of integrity, trust, and respect. The decision violated the trust of the college faculty. In light of this decision, the Faculty Senate resolved to censure the Executive Cabinet and to condemn its wrongful decision in the strongest terms. The Senate recognized the gravity of this resolution and declared that the resolution should stand until such time as the Executive Cabinet admits its error and rescinds or rectifies this decision in a manner that is satisfactory to the faculty. Finally, the Senate resolved to affirm and support the math faculty and the hundreds of hours of work and considered process that led to the stated placement prerequisite scores. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no further speakers. I'd like to thank everyone for being here and for sharing their thoughts on this really important issue. I believe that trustee-chair in absentia, Muzel, has some comments he wanted to add. Greg?
Stephanie Ken, everybody hear me?
Yep. We're good.
I did want to respond to this because the issue has bubbled up to the surface and has roiled the waters at the college. I think due to a number of unusual circumstances, and one thing I did not hear from all the comments, and I apologize, I could not hear distinctly on several of the speakers, the fact that this was created by the use of a new placement test, different from past placement tests, which yielded significantly different results. Had that new test yielded results consistent with the past test, we wouldn't be here today talking about this. But the results were dramatically different. Now, like most issues that come to this level at the college, it involves multiple stakeholders. I've heard some of those discussed tonight. This is not administration versus faculty versus students versus the board. It's about our core mission of providing affordable and accessible education to citizens of Johnson County and beyond. This affected high school faculty, as has been mentioned, counselors, principals, parents, high school students, all of whom were seeking a reasonable opportunity to take tests, to take for college credit courses they would have taken in the past and likely would have qualified for based on the percentages. This issue needed to be resolved quickly. Now, I would be the first to acknowledge, and I think Dr. Sobchak has already done so, at collegial steering and at learning quality, that the process was not perfect and was not adequate. The judgment calls and prompt decisions that were made didn't fully include the faculty of math or other faculty, and that has been made clear by Dr. Sobchak, and he and his cabinet have committed to learning from that mistake. That's a process error. Substantively, I did not hear from any speaker the factual numbers that I'm aware of with respect to college placement scores and qualifications for the Precalculus courses in high school. My understanding is that historically, 12% of those high school students in those high school classes who took a placement test for college credit, 12% historically did not place. This year, 42% did not place. I don't think those 30% of the students increase over historical numbers are students who necessarily didn't work hard, weren't smart enough, hadn't satisfied prerequisites, or didn't try hard enough to get accessible to college credit. Those 30% more likely, based on historical numbers, did work hard and did expect that they would place. I think the result, the numbers going from 12% to 42%, should have raised alert and should have required the discussion that started and the decision that was made. Now, whether there was time for more research in the decision-making process, I assume is arguable, but the amount of vitriol and harsh language expressed by some has been disappointing to me. What the decision did essentially for the math department in that class was to tell 12% of the people who would historically not have placed that they were going to get to seek college credit. And once they do, we will find out if those folks were capable of the class rigor or not. What it also did was let the 30% that historically would have placed get an opportunity like prior fall semester classes have allowed. Under all the circumstances, I don't find that decision reprehensible or unreasonable or so extraordinary as to justify the language I've heard in emails and in resolutions. I agree the process and the communication was inadequate. I believe that this has identified an issue we need to look at. Most of us had very little sense of what placement scores were being used at our college. At least I did not. I won't speak for the rest of the board. I think we need to review those placement scores because there may be places we are too low and they need to be increased. There may be places that are too high, and we need to make sure scores are fully aligned with our mission as a community college. I really appreciate the passion of our faculty. I appreciated it when we went through the due process issue a couple of years ago. I appreciate it today. What I am less appreciative of is a position that says, "You must publicly apologize and humiliate yourself in order to get our approval. You must restructure the Executive Cabinet in order to get our approval. You must rescind a decision, and on that, we are not willing to compromise." Those are all phrases that I've read on behalf of faculty members, both associations, the Senate, the Educational Affairs Committee, and individual emails. I don't think that language was necessary. I think it's over the top for this decision. The dangerous precedent that has been alleged here isn't much of a precedent and isn't as dangerous as suggested. It didn't threaten academic freedom or undermine our commitment to quality standards for our academic role. I really hope we'll think long and hard before choosing paths that are more likely to end in division and criticism than on unity and improvement at all levels, including communication by the administration, the faculty, and the board as well. But on the mission of the college, my goal is to empower the administration, the faculty, the staff, and students in our community to perform our mission in an environment that is challenging and changing and at times controversial. But I'm comfortable that this decision was motivated by a desire to put students first, something that I didn't hear a lot of in the comments, and that something that I didn't hear a lot of in the comments, and that there was no evil motive, intent, or otherwise with respect to this decision. So though I appreciate everybody's passion on this, I left collegial steering meeting earlier this month believing that we could find a way to move forward. I'm going to leave this meeting today, even though I regret that I couldn't be there in person, hoping the same thing. But if we continue to turn up the temperature with the language that we use, it will be harder to focus on the things we need to do to improve. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I agree, I concur that this was a failure of process. I'm still a little bit beside myself how the faculty were not consulted in this decision-making process. I think I understand some of the logistics involved, but frankly, I'm going to take the, I think what's a first for me to express my disappointment in all involved because I still don't understand, having held a brief discussion on this in learning quality and having had numerous phone conversations and communications about this, I still don't understand why the gap existed. I understand there was a difference in testing. I understand there was various factors involved, and as a student of social science, I get that the answer lies in the complexity of any situation. I still just don't understand why it is. I think there are numerous reasons for that. As to substantive response, I'm not sure what I would have done as an administrator. I certainly understand the faculty's position on it. I invite any of the speakers here that would want to enter their statements into the board record to do so, please, just so that there is a proper record. As an attorney, I know that that is critical in any discussion and analysis. As to whether or not this sets a bad precedent, I do worry about that. I have enough trust and confidence in our administration. I do believe there was some contrition at the learning quality meeting that I and trustee Sandate were present at. I was not at collegiate steering. I haven't been in many other meetings, but I do feel the administration has expressed, and as trustee Musil just said, though we disagree on some parts, it's my nature and relationship with trustee Musil that I agree with him more than I don't. But at a minimum, I wish that there had been faculty involvement, that they had been considered in the process, and that we absolutely must look at establishing policies and standards so that we avoid this in the future, please. It has dominated my time in the last month. It has led to numerous tense conversations with everyone involved, and I would rather avoid such circumstances. And again, I still don't even understand what happened, which is my disappointment to all involved, and maybe it's my slower uptake. As to whether or not the faculty care about our students, I do believe I heard many of our professors express that they take great pride and joy in preparing our students for transfer. They did when I attended here, and I believe that that is what this was all about, was whether or not our students have been accurately assessed, placed, and set up for success in the classroom. I do believe that everyone involved has that concern as their top priority. So I wanted to express my concern, disappointment in all, support for all, and you can call that a politician's answer, but I think I've said enough here tonight, so.
Thank you, trustee Cross. Trustee Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You are running for office, right? So I understand the politics. I just want to say that I want to thank each of you for coming and speaking, and I want to thank each of you that are here in support of your colleagues. I really, as I listen to this and as I've kept up to speed on what's been going on the last month, I've often felt we should never fear difference of opinion. We should fear our lack of ability to resolve difference of opinion. We make a lot of decisions every day, and not everybody is going to be pleased with the decision that's made. But I applaud passion for your feelings. I applaud passion for what everybody stands for. I'm not going to repeat any comments that my colleagues, trustee Cross and trustee Musil, have made, but I think, being on this board, I believe you know me enough to know that I'm very concerned about the process. That has been acknowledged. The president has acknowledged that there were some errors in the process. When I think back of how a course is defined, a faculty member has an idea, this is my understanding of the process, and maybe I'm wrong. A faculty member has an idea, goes to the department, the department head in that department blesses it, edits it, or whatever. It goes on to the dean, it goes on to academic affairs, it goes through a process of review, it comes to the administration, the trustees approve, it ends up in the hands of Kansas Board of Regents, and it's a very long process to get to a point for a course. Like trustee Musil and trustee Cross, I'm not sure that, I failed you in understanding what those placement requirements are by department. And I applaud you for having a standard of professionalism that's at a level. I think I heard in the testimony that it's an issue we've talked about and been discussing before at College Now, what qualifications do high school teachers have to teach a course for College Now, and is that acceptable? I think I heard the comment, "We have students who aren't qualified to take a course." My question would be, well, who judges the qualifications a student should have for a course? Because if I'm going to take a course for higher learning, I'm there to learn higher standards. And so this whole issue of who decides the qualification factor is an interesting one. I sense some deeper issues that need to be discussed, and I hope that through our collegial steering, through our learning quality, through that whole academic affairs process, that we are all of emotion and stature to have good discussions about our differences to find resolve. But I thank you all for being here, and I thank all the thought that's gone into this. I guess I'm going to be critical of myself and the board, and I'm always reminded of Mr. Holland's opus. When Richard Dreyfuss went in front of the Board of Education when they were going to cut out the orchestra program, and the board president said, "We're doing the best we can." And if you saw the movie, you remember Mr. Holland's response is, "Your best isn't good enough." So I'm not sure our collective best, faculty, staff, high school superintendents, everybody involved with College Now, administration, board of trustees, maybe our best isn't good enough, and we just have to get better at understanding differences and understanding what's, excuse me, what's best for students of a community college that says we're accessible to all students. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. Again, I do want to thank everyone. Did anyone else have comments? Oh, Henry, I'm sorry. Standing, sorry.
Chairwoman Sharp, thank you very much. I just want to applaud the faculty for their sincere interest and concern, but equally, I want to applaud the leadership here for, I believe, what they did, the best that they could, with the true intentions of what's best for the students. And I think ultimately, that's what this is all about, what's best for the students and for our community. And so with that being said, I just want to make it very clear that there was no malintent. There was no intention of a power play or eliminating or going through a process without the faculty in mind. I think this was a sincere attempt to correct a problem that occurred that a lot of us didn't foresee coming, to be honest with you. And the reality is, is that's what we're here for. We're here to correct such problems, and such problems will occur again in the future, I assure you. But what I'm grateful for is that we're all here together, trying to figure this all out, to move forward the best that we can, to do what's best for the students. So that's the intent. Nobody's trying to supersede or pull a quick one, if you will, over the employees and the faculty of the community college here. So with that being said, I just want to express my gratitude for your intent, your sincerity, to the faculty, and I want to express my gratitude to the leadership for doing the best they could. And I assure you, through all this, we will move forward, we'll be better for it. And I thank you very much.
Absolutely. There's really been two things that kind of drive my perspective on all of this, and a while back, this was brought to my attention, that there were some concerns about Accuplacer and scoring and this kind of thing. So I was made aware of that and actually had visited with Dr. McLeod about that and just made the suggestion that, you know, we're doing the right thing, and was reassured that we were. And I am concerned primarily because the two things that really drive my perspective on all of this are the data that went into the conversation. I wasn't at collegial steering. I many times enjoy going to learning quality because I learn a lot there, but I wasn't there as well. So I haven't been a part of those discussions. But the other piece is just really being transparent, and I think any of us who have run for this position talk about the transparency that we need to have. So I look forward, I think it's been a very unfortunate thing that has occurred, but I do believe that as we move forward, we will resolve this and we'll come out stronger. But you all are passionate about what you do, and we appreciate that. Likewise, administration is passionate about what they do too. So I think there's a lot of room to move forward here together, but there have been concerns about this. I have not had the conversations that some of my fellow board members have had. I have seen some of the emails that have gone out. I do believe that, you know, moving forwards constructively is going to be important, but we're listening, I think, as a board. You know, I'm very proud to work with these people up front. I think you've got a good, strong board. We come with different perspectives, but we will move forward with this. And I think it's important that we do so quickly, but that we remain at the table with you and listening to both sides. So thank you.
Thank you both. Anybody else? Okay. I just want to wrap up, and again, thank you all for coming here because I'm saddened by the unfortunate events that brought all of you here, but this is why we're here, to listen to you, not only because you're faculty, but because you're voters. And this is why I ran for this board eight years ago, is I missed that voter interaction. And so I'm sorry that it's a bad situation that brought you all out, but I love to see your smiling faces participating in the process and giving us an earful. That is why we're here, constituent relations, and here to represent the voters. So it's really important, please come back sometime, other time. It's not always boring, I promise. At this point, we'll move on to awards and recognitions.
I'd like to ask Karen Gerdy-Folk to take the podium.
Thank you. I'm very honored to be here. This is kind of a change in tone. We're going to go towards a celebratory feeling now. Tomorrow marks the 10th anniversary of the Nerman Museum of Contemporary Art. I've worked here on campus for 12 years, however, as curator of education, and when I was hired, the museum was under construction. Of course, I was excited about that, but I was thrilled to work here with the amazing art on campus. That accessibility I had never seen before on a campus, where we had sculptures outside, the hallways filled with photographs and paintings. And we started our volunteer program very shortly after I was hired. So since the museum opened 10 years ago, we've had dozens of individuals donate their time to leading tours, assisting with visitor services, and helping with children's programs. And collectively, our volunteers have contributed over 24,000 hours of their time working with us, and it makes what we do possible. We have thousands of schoolchildren visit us every year on field trips. We have thousands of college students visit us too. People might be surprised to know that the majority of the college students that come on tours of the museum are not the art students, it's the English students. It's the English-language learners. It's the nursing students. It is the science, technology, engineering, and math students as well. So our humanities professors have been great about bringing students over. In art history, professors bring people over, and we're contemporary art, so all the artists they're studying from 300 years ago are long dead, and we can see connections with living artists. So what we do when we lead tours is not an easy thing. It's not the same tour every time. Not only do we work with a variety of learners from the preschool children to elementary, high school, and the adults in the community, we make sure that our programs are very interactive, very learner-based, in that we don't know what people are going to ask, we don't know what they're going to say when they make observations, and we really welcome that, that everyone has an opinion, everyone has observations, and they're demonstrating their critical thinking skills. That's why being a docent is so hard. And when we have a training class, my retention rates have been a little better the last few years, but I'll share with you, our first docent training class of 25 people, not many of them lasted until the opening because I'm such a hard teacher, right? It's a lot of content to learn. Many of our docents had a background in teaching, perhaps they had been a schoolteacher, they had retired. Some of them still teach. We have faculty members, former faculty members, and we have people who just love culture and they want to contribute to the college. So I have a few people here who I wanted to recognize. Again, we're very fortunate to have a few individuals who were in that very first group still actively volunteering with us. But we decided a few years ago that we need to give people a graceful transition if they need to retire, if they need to devote more time to other things in their lives, or if they're moving. So we developed the emeritus status, so people who have been volunteering, giving tours with us for over five years can retire with grace and honor. And tonight, we have five of those 10 individuals here with us. I want to mention the people who weren't able to make it tonight. Doreen Morandi, John Murphy, Sue Nerman, Jim Sichter, and Bobby Tip. They had all been volunteering with us before we opened, so more than 10 years ago. And with us tonight, we have Jean Hunter, who contributed over 453 hours as a docent. If you would stand, Jean. Thank you. And Linda Maskell, who is also in that class of 2006, 568 hours of volunteer service. Thank you. Janine Matthews, class of 2007, right before we opened, over 500 hours, and she was working at the information desk, and I grabbed her to come over here. She's continuing to volunteer with us. Thank you, Janine. Lynn McLennan, who joined our 2009 training group, 464 hours of volunteer work. And Judy Nagle, who's also continuing to actively volunteer with us, class of 2006, and has volunteered over 1,000 hours. So thank you all so much for your... You can tell they love what they do, and they brought so much of that love to our programs. We hope to think that those first graders that are coming out here next week for their, they're seeing the performance of My Father's Dragon, and they're coming on museum tours for an all-art-day experience. We like to think that in 12 years, they're going to be thinking about going to college here. So it's all connected, and we're very grateful for your service, and we appreciate everything you do. Thanks.
Karen, thank you for what you do as far as this. I mean, they make a huge difference when people visit the Nerman. Jean, you were, don't you have a lot of history in this room?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. I was here from about 1975, '78 to '95.
You were on the...
And I hired Bruce.
You hired Bruce.
And one day, I said to him, "If you ever get a museum built, I'll be your first docent." Well, guess what he did? And it was a delightful experience, and it's amazing. I knew nothing about contemporary art, really. I mean, I...
Jean, if you add that experience along with your trustee experience, how many years have you been working on doing stuff?
16 and 10.
Yeah, 26, quarter of a century.
And I pay attention, too.
Thank you. Thank you, Jean.
Thanks. That was awesome. We are going to move to the student senate report. Mr. Rowe.
My name is Alex Rowe. I'm a pre-medicine student who's currently serving as the JCCC Student Senate President for the 2017 through 2018 academic year. I wanted to thank the board for granting me the opportunity to speak before you and provide this update on the work recently undertaken by our student government. As always, an initial goal of the student senate has been to fill all of our vacant seats as the new term gets underway. And although I had long taken it for granted, it is my understanding that in years past, our senate had rarely... our Senate had rarely achieved maximum capacity, which is why I'm repeating what my two immediate predecessors have about how motivating it is to learn that we've come so far in increasing our student body's presence and influence in our student government. This has, of course, resulted in a good problem to have, which is that an overwhelming plethora of pursuits and objectives have come from our various voices, and we've had to work towards narrowing down those objectives into more specific and quantifiable goals. The one aspect for our membership that I regret is that we have yet to overcome the persistent problem of failure to recruit students from a few of our most prominent departments on campus, including, for example, the athletics and computer sciences. Nonetheless, the Student Senate is in the process of footing forward initiatives to amend that lack of representation, and I hope to provide the board with positive progress on that front in the future. Among the Student Senate's active projects are the continuation of the longstanding sponsorship and guidance of two of the most successful student-led events here on campus, JCC Gives and Trick or Treat for Kids, the latter of which is occurring this Friday evening, so tomorrow. These two programs are somewhat unique in their ability to connect so many different clubs, organizations and departments on campus, and both have been immensely successful in the past. And in particular, JCC Gives reached an enormous milestone last year in having successfully raised more than $2,000 in cash donations for charitable giving aimed at relieving poverty and hardships faced by an unfortunately large number of members of our JCCC family. Although last year I was skeptical that raising our goal from $500 to $100 was at all feasible, I'm happy to say the fact that we raised more than double that amount, in addition to direct presence donations, which don't even go into that figure, proved me wrong. I'm hopeful that we will be able to attain an equal or greater success this year. One of the sources of our successes was a really interesting idea presented by two of our officers, which was to reach out to small businesses in the area who were willing to sponsor our charity, and this is a strategy that we intend to continue this holiday season. And it didn't hurt to have Dr. Sobchak agree to dye his hair green in order to raise money for our cause.
Terrific, loved it.
Yeah.
I wish I would have done that for denied. It might have added some humor.
It's my understanding that you or one of your colleagues actually had to go to like a Chamber of Commerce meeting shortly after having dyed it, so that was interesting. Individuals and/or families of JCC students, faculty and staff who are need can be nominated to receive aid until November 3, and that will be the deadline. I'd humbly ask that the board extend the same support they have in the past years for this trademark program of the Student Senate. Trick or Treat for Kids is by no means the only ways in which Student Senate has been working towards creating a more cohesive campus. My predecessor, Donnie Whitten, succeeded in establishing the highly ambitious creation of the Spirit Award. With the support of the administration, Senate has been able to allocate $4,000 towards this award. As you see, as a communal campus, we face a big difficulty in trying to create a sense of unity and enthusiasm towards campus activities. And so the goal of the Spirit Award is to bring together the different branches of the student body by supporting, for example, attending our sports games, participation in campus-wide events, and then visiting other clubs or coordinating with them in their gatherings. And then next, I wanted to report on the activities of the Student Senate Budget Committee, which has already reviewed funding requests from four student clubs and organizations collectively funding nearly $12,000 for their events, the expenses thereof including travel and registration costs for various nationwide competitions, showcases and conferences. And actually, on that note, I and four of my fellow officers recently returned from a Student Government Association Conference in St. Louis, where we had the opportunity to meet with fellow student leaders and mentors from higher education institutions all across the nation. And having had the privilege of attending this conference last year, knowing that I would be able to attend it again this year was one of my most anticipated opportunities. Although, of course, our budget committee did not spend its own money on that. That was, we don't spend money on ourselves. That was a separate fund. And I'd just like to conclude my speech by acknowledging the ongoing efforts of the Student Senate to embrace the momentum we've gained over the past couple of years, and we're establishing even more student-led events and collaborations. These include efforts to partner with the Student Sustainability Committee, the Black Student Union, and Latinos United Now and Always to better fulfill our mutual goals. Again, thank the board for having appropriated me this time to update you all on the activities of Student Senate, and look forward to speaking with you again in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Rowe, any comments?
Will you be coming to Some Enchanted Evening?
I'm sorry? Oh, Some Enchanted Evening?
Yeah, will you be coming to Some Enchanted Evening?
I will be, yes.
Okay.
Great, great.
Alex, are all of your, are all of your speeches going to be this funny, humorous? Some look forward to, I think, in the future, so.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind, then.
Thanks, Alex.
And now we move to the College Lobbyist Report. Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This report is going to start a little bit differently than several of my reports have started over the past year and a half or longer, because we have what appears to be good news. And I qualify that with appears to be, but the end of September revenues were up nearly $60 million. That is, in fact, good news. And when you combine that with the first quarter earnings for the state, we are up nearly $80 million over expectations. The reality is that we still have $510 million to go before June 30 of 2018 to meet the budget that the legislature passed this past session. Everything seems to be going along well, and there's no indication that October won't have similar results as far as receipts are concerned into the state budget, but a big shoe dropped on October 2. The Supreme Court issued its decision on Gannon 2.0 on adequacy, and they declared the funding model that was passed by the legislature this past session constitutionally inadequate. I think that really changes, well, I don't think, that really changes the tone of what will happen this coming, this coming year. I reported to you last time that the Board of Regents had approved and submitted a budget that would allow for reinstating the cuts that were made in 2017 to all of higher education, and that that would be their number one priority. That is all in jeopardy now because of, because of what the legislature faces when they returned to Topeka in 2018. Some have said that they think that the court did not give a number. They've been very careful never to prescribe a dollar amount to what funding for K-12 education should look like. But some have said, who are close to that process, that it could be in the neighborhood of $200 million. It's unclear whether that's all at once or spread over a period of years as an increase. Again, those details remain to be seen, but that will be the driving force for, for the legislative session. That, that's a little bit disappointing, because I think most folks had thought we'd turned the corner and would be able to sort of begin putting things back on track with respect to other areas of state government. I did talk a little bit about, in this report, a couple of things that we're aware that will be occurring specific to higher education and possibly specific to the college in the coming session. And one of those issues is concurrent enrollment. There are conversations going on presently as to what a pilot project might look like in that area, and most likely it could occur in this particular part of the state. Stay tuned on that. That's something that we'll be involved in throughout the legislative session and probably leading up to it. The other issue that we're beginning to hear conversations about is revisiting the guns-on-campus issue. And so I think that we'll have some continued conversations with respect to that issue. There could be new bills. They could take on a different look, and I'm not going to pretend to know what that looks like at this point, but I think that those, those conversations are going on as well presently. The other thing that I wanted to draw your attention to at the back of my report is kind of an annual advocacy report that I attached. I presented this to the Government Affairs Task Force yesterday, and this sort of outlines all of the advocacy issues that, that we've undertaken and taken on, some of the specific activities that we've done over the course of the past legislative session. I understand that the year isn't over yet, but in reality, a lot of our activities start in November and December of the year preceding the legislative session with some of the preparatory activities that we do, inviting the legislators to campus for some hospitality. And so I would just highlight a couple of those. I know that you can read and can peruse that at your leisure. We specifically tracked 50 bills related to higher education last year. There were four bills in which the college provided testimony on, which compared to 2016 and 2015 is more than those two years combined. Last year, we participated in, and it wasn't just our participation, the first-ever Higher Education Day at the State Capitol where all 36 institutions under the umbrella of the Board of Regents came together and held an awareness day. We'll be doing that again this coming year. We made a touch point, Kate and I made a touch point with all of the Johnson County delegation in Topeka last year. We worked with Congressman Yoder's office to encourage him to sign on to a Perkins extension, a Perkins loan extension bill, which he did.
Okay. Thanks, Greg.
Which, which he did as a, which he did as a sponsor. And then monitoring the Higher Education Reauthorization Act, which really hasn't taken place yet, but there are four key components to that that I just would, would call your attention to, and those are: announced by Chairwoman Fox from North Carolina, empowering students and families to make informed decisions about college life, simplifying improved financial aid, promote access, innovation and completion, and promote strong accountability with a limited federal role. And I think you're seeing some of those things with the Education Secretary, the new administration move in, the fact that we have the extension of the Perkins Loan Act coming out. You'll begin to see some of those things in the coming months. There are some of the interim committee issues that I've talked about in the past, listed on the final page, and then just a few more issues that will be driving the 2018 legislative session. And so feel free to take a look at those, and if you have questions at some point either tonight or in the future, feel free to let me know.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Questions, comments?
I do have some questions. Mr. Carter, with talk of a federal tax cut similar to what Kansas did, that would affect community college budgets, wouldn't it?
I think it remains to be seen what the impact of the type of tax policy that we instituted in 2012 and 13 would look like at the federal level, but I think that you could anticipate that certainly the idea would be to shrink the size of government. I think the model is very similar.
You have in your report, you say you served as a central point of contact for congressional staffers. What do you mean by that?
When they have questions or issues, there is an education staffer in the Senate and House offices. They have reached out to me as the first point of contact to start that process, whether it's answering a question, getting some type of information for them about our college, or we've had some of them to campus before for touring as well.
And I think in some of our conversations, I've been surprised to learn that many of the congressional staff will call you rather than even KACC personnel to learn about issues connected to Kansas community colleges. Is that right?
That, that has occurred, and I forwarded those issues on through President Sobchak to Lynn Funn, but that's a rare occasion, but that has, that has happened.
Does it happen more locally? Maybe I got that crossed out.
No, no, it has happened. I think that that's their, that's, they know, they know they can reach me, they know I can get them to the right person.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to collegial steering, and I am tasked to discuss that, and I wasn't at the meeting this month. So I think we're going to skip that report.
The issue, the primary issue was a discussion on concurrent. And the presentation was made that was extremely thorough on the data collection and the process that goes into coming up with the cut scores and all.
Yes. I was attending the Women's Foundation 25th Anniversary on behalf of the, representing the college, so I wasn't at that meeting. So we'll move to Human Resources. Trustee Ingram.
Thank you. The Human Resources Committee met at 9:30 a.m. on Monday, October 2. As a result of this meeting, we are bringing two recommendations provided, two recommendations to the board this evening. Prior to that, I will let you know that Julie Vivas, who's manager of employee relations, provided an overview of the college's performance management process. Karen Martley, Vice President, Continuing Education and Organizational Development, gave an update on the 2017 Employee Engagement Survey. The first survey was conducted in 2015, and the employment engagement surveys are a part of an AQUIP action project, excuse me. Jerry Zimmerman, manager of benefits, reviewed the Investment Committee Charter and explained the addition of an indemnification provision for the committee's members. The Human Resources Committee reviewed the amended and restated Investment Committee Charter as updated by the Johnson County Community College Benefits Manager and found, and this is also found in our board packet. The original charter was adopted by the college on July 1, 2011, and addresses responsibilities of the Investment Committee charged with overseeing all matters relating to the investment of the assets of the Johnson County Community College 403B Plan and the Johnson County Community College Tax-deferred Retirement Plan, also known as 457B. This restated document includes an indemnification provision that provides indemnity coverage for Investment Committee members or any director, officer or employee of Johnson County Community College as a result of their participation on the Investment Committee or otherwise serving in the investment oversight of the Johnson County Community College 403B Plan or 457B Plan. Madam Chair, it is the recommendation of the Human Resources Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the amended and restated Investment Committee Charter as presented to the Human Resources Committee, and I so move.
Second.
Has been a motion and a second discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Also at the meeting, Becky Sintliver, Vice President, Human Resources, reviewed recommended changes to the probationary policy, which is the final policy in the Conduct and Performance section of the college's policy library. Material changes include the removal of the salary increases procedure included in the probationary period policy. The Human Resources Committee has reviewed the recommended updates to the probationary period policy. The proposed updates clarify the circumstances under which the probationary period will start, restart, or be extended. Additionally, subject to board approval, any applicable salary increases will go into effect for employees who are or were in a probationary period effective at the beginning of the current fiscal year. Madam Chair, it is the recommendation of the Human Resources Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposed amendments to the probationary period policy as is shown subsequently in the board packet, and again, I so move.
Second.
Has been a motion and a second discussion. Trustee Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm assuming that all of these changes are in align with our employee contract, and I guess my question is, why now? Why are we dealing with this at the end of a, what I would consider a term?
It was a year ago that we changed our probationary policy from six months to a year for full-time employees. And when we did that, we inadvertently acted in a paragraph that talked about the salaries, and we said then that we would not give salaries until the probationary period. What's happened is many of our full-time temporary grant-funded positions are considering temporary the entire duration of their employment. So by doing that, it would just basically say that those people would not be eligible for increases every year. So the reason we're changing it right now is because it was changed a year and a half ago from six months to a year, and we're leaving that still at a year. We're just making the material changes to enable those people get increases.
Thank you.
Trustee, Madam Chair, may I?
Please. Trustee Cross.
Mr. Trustee Cook, you mean the end of the term for the service contract, the master agreement, or do you mean the end?
And this would have no, no effect on the master agreement.
I understand, I just...
No, I'm just, I'm just, I guess I'm thinking, here we are a year and a half later, and based on your answer. I was just interested in the timing of this.
Yeah, I'm not arguing with you, I was just asking.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Learning Quality Committee... Oh, sorry, is anything further?
No.
Learning Quality Committee, Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Learning Quality Committee met October 2, 2017, at 8:00 a.m. in this room. Trustees Sandate and I were present, along with many members in the administration. Dr. Weber, Dr. McLeod, Dr., I believe Dr. Larson and Sobchak were there, along with Dennis Arjo, faculty members. We had several presentations that day monitoring faculty development with respect to sabbatical appointments. Beth Gully, professor of English, was granted a sabbatical for the fall 2016 and spring 2017 semester. Professor Gully was invited to serve as a visiting scholar at the Northwestern Polytechnic University, NPU, and Shizan?
Shion.
Shion.
Shion. Shion.
Shion China to teach English classes during the 2016-17 school year. She's also in charge of coordinating the selection and placement of NPU students into English online courses at JCCC and researching the benefits to NPU students. Professor Gully shared her experiences through a link that you can find in the Board Packet. By the way, the Learning Quality Report is reported on pages five through seven, which I incorporate by reference here, and she used that as a tool to store the documents for the courses taught in China. Professor Shion Harris also gave a sabbatical presentation on an analysis. He was granted a sabbatical for the fall 2016 semester, and the purpose of his sabbatical was to acquire additional research specializing in contemporary world literature, which included reading literature by Nobel Prize winners dated 1990 to 2016, and Professor Harris embedded the knowledge from his readings into the classroom, greatly benefiting the student's knowledge and classroom experience. And I have to say, it was a remarkable presentation, mostly of Western experience, but I think also providing insight to the global economy from this observer's perspective. Another presentation was made by Professor James Hopper, Web Development and Digital Media, and the Chair of the Educational Affairs Committee. He presented several curriculum modifications to the committee effective academic year 2018 and 19. Madam Chair, you'd be glad to know I'm going to skip those and reference those policy changes at page six of the packet, and then move on to say that Dr. Gurb Singh, Associate Vice President of Academic Affairs, presented two new affiliation agreements to the committee. The first agreement will be with Beyond Interpreting, to provide clinical experience for students enrolled in the ASL English Interpreting Preparation Program. The second agreement will be with New Liberty Hospital District to provide clinical experience for the students enrolled in the Neurodiagnostic Technology and Respiratory Care Programs. Both agreements were approved by the committee, and complete details can be found subsequently in the Consent Agenda portion of the October 26th Board Packet. Also, Rick Mooreing, Dean and Learner, Dean of Learner and Engagement Success, presented an articulation agreement with Kansas State University. Global campus to the committee, the agreement provides the opportunity for qualified students to participate in Direct Link, a dual advising initiative designed to assist bachelor's degree-seeking transfer students in meeting graduation goals at public institutions. The agreement was approved by the committee, and complete details can be found subsequently in the Consent Agenda portion of the August 17th Board, August 17th Board Packet. The agreement was approved by the committee, and complete details can be found subsequently in the Consent Agenda portion of the October 26th Board Packet. I will add that we did have a discussion about the suspension of the college now placement scores. Dr. Weber presented for, sorry, Dr. Weber presented for the administration, and Professors Melanie Harvey and Beth Edmonds presented for the faculty, because frankly, I wanted to know what happened. I appreciate everyone presenting that day, and I appreciate the discussion tonight. I also do think, quite frankly, there needs to be some advice and consent sought from the faculty. They do not always get what they want when you have a voice in what goes on, but I do think, frankly, they should have been consulted, and I don't mean to beat a dead horse, I'm just making my position clear. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Cross. Any comments? Moving on to Management Committee, Trustee Dr. Cook.
Thank you. I want to apologize to Trustee Cross for the noise. I'll be very transparent of what I was trying to do. I was trying to look at my dictionary of how to pronounce E.I., because I wanted to make sure I pronounced Philip Main's name correctly, and I wasn't sure if it was.
It's Mine.
Is it Mine?
It's Mine.
Yeah, so that's what I got. I'm sorry, I got screwed up. Anyway, the Management Committee did meet on October 4th at 8:00 a.m. here in the boardroom with a large cadre of people attending. That report is found on pages eight through 21 of your Board Packet. Barbara Larson, Executive Vice President of Finance, gave a report on the college's Continuing Education Testing Center Proctor for the Cambridge Assessment Admissions Testing Center. That's on page 43 of the Consent Agenda. She also updated us on the fiscal year 18-19 budget process, and those guidelines in our process actually will begin in December 6th when we, when we'll take, we'll have those guidelines brought forth to us. Mitch Borchers, Associate Vice President of Business Services, gave the sole service report. That's found on page nine of your Board Packet, and again, that, those include the items of bids between $25,000 and $100,000. Rex Hayes, Associate Vice President of Campus Services and Facilities Planning, gave a monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and that report is found on page 15. Tom Pagano, the Vice President of Information Services, provided a quarterly update on our information services. That's found on page 16. And then we had a pretty detailed report on information technology presented by Philip Main. This is, October is Cyber Security Awareness Month, and I guess I would challenge all of us, if we, if we think we know quite a bit about cybersecurity and technology, we might schedule a coffee or lunch with Philip, and I think that you'll get an indication of what you know and what you don't know, but we were very impressed with Philip's presentation. He did a terrific job. We have two recommendations this evening. The first is regarding our, our contract with, our annual contract for Government Affairs Liaison Services. You'll recall that we pushed that off a month last, in September, and the reason for that was to have further discussions with, in this case, the Carter Group regarding strategies going forward. We did enter into a four-year renewal agreement with the Carter Group back in September of 13, and this is the last of a four-year renewal process. In that discussion, we finalized strategies for state lobbying, and we have removed the expectation of the Carter Group to do federal legislation, and so that's why you'll see a reduced amount in the proposed contract. So it is the, excuse me, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract for state government affairs liaison services with the Carter Group, Inc., at an amount not to exceed $46,783.38 plus expenses pursuant to college travel policies, and I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Has been a motion and a second discussion?
Madam Chair, I had disagreed with the, I disagreed with the recommendation in committee. I disagree with it now. I think in my estimation, we do need a lobbyist in DC. We're looking for the role of contrarian, and I'm happy to have it now. I think that the human being on the ground matters. I think the relationships with a person that can be delegated from the administration to someone with the knowledge and experience of the lay of the land, particularly when, I think he's well-received by everyone in Washington. I disagree that it's more than planning three meetings for $27,000, and I do think, I will, I will vote no on this, so, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Cross. Trustee, Dr. Cross.
Madam Chair, as I indicated to Trustee Cross at Management, and we'll say again tonight, one of our reasons for making this decision is we have a number of staff that have been very engaged, depending upon the topic at the congressional level, with the congressional's local staff. We have, including trustees, administration, and other staff members that have that engagement. And I think while you asked the question of Mr. Carter during his report, he did say it happens, but he also said, I think I heard him say it, it's rare, but it does happen. He does have outstanding relationships with staff, but we feel at this point in time for this year, we would like to pursue the congressional issues with our, with our, with our staff, and that's why we're making the recommendation.
I have a quick question of the, those are those on the Management Committee. If there was any conversation about the uncertainty in Washington DC, the, what's going on in education in general, and higher education specifically, just the sort of kerfuffle that's become Congress right now as they head into the end and the crucial part of their session, was that conversation?
Well, yes, and I think there's, every day there's a question about what will be resolved in Washington, what will be resolved with tax reform. I think Trustee Cross raised a great question about how will federal tax reform impact the potential dollars at the college level. We seem to be, though I think properly should be more focused on where the state is rather than the federal. The Pell Grants, there's strong support at the, at the national level for year-round Pell. That was approved last year. That's one of the big federal programs. Perkins Act is another big program, and I think our feeling is that in the Congress, in a nonpartisan way, there's strong support for community college activities, and we thought we would like to see a year of how, how it would work with our own staff.
So you're suggesting that this is just for a year, that we will revisit this?
We will, we can renew this, this whole issue when, and this contract would go, we're recommending through September 30th of 2018 for the remainder of this year. Correct?
Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As much as I enjoy riling up Trustee Cook, I do respectfully disagree. I think now is the time not to pull out with a lobbyist. I do think that reasonable people can disagree, and I've thought long and hard about why any of our previous boards or administrations would have done this, and I think it's just the flanking of a marketing tool, having a lobbyist on the ground, I think separates yourself from the 19 other community colleges and six technical schools at a minimum. So I think while we have KACC T, and I agree the state is more important generally, we have in the past five years had monies from the federal government come anywhere from, what did I say? I meant to say KACC T and ACC T, if I didn't say that. $24 to $40 million over the last five years has been the amount of money we get from the federal government. I think Senator Flake was somebody that instituted taking out earmarks. I think that has been, I think to the detriment of any kind of deal-cutting in Congress. Nevertheless, I think if I understand Trustee Sharp's point, I think now is an uncertain time in not knowing what's going on. Knowing what's going on in Congress is more important than ever, because you have to be there on the ground to know what's going on, because there's a complete lack of trust. You literally have to operate the human network to know what's going on. They don't tweet and Facebook everything they're doing. I'm sorry, folks, they just don't. So I disagree.
Any further discussion?
I have, I have some comments. Having worked in DC, both in a Senate, US Senate office and in a state office representing a US senator back here in the state, in Wichita, in a district office is what they're called, leaving this to chance and to staff that I know is already overworked and mostly underpaid, I have some serious concerns about leaving our federal responsibilities un, or undermonitored at this point. DC is a mess. We think Topeka or our local communities are, are having trouble. DC is a, is a, is a mess, and now is not the time, I think, that we need to back out of that. We need someone there, especially since this RFP is open again in 11 months or something. We're due for an RFP. I think we should continue this, this current contract and re, and have that conversation since we're going to have a new RFP next year anyway. So with that being said, I make a substitute motion to amend the Management Committee's recommendation to restore the original contract amount to include federal lobbying services and continue the amended amount through the remaining 11 contract months upon which the board can reconsider such work with the next RFP. I do make that a substitute motion.
I believe we should vote on the first motion before we entertain a substitute motion.
A substitute motion takes priority.
Second.
Tanya?
I'll just respond to Trustee Sharp's comments. A lot of the recommendation came from staff based upon how they felt they could handle the congressional issues. That was important in our decision, and based on what the topic would be, I have every confidence that our staff can handle it and that we can save the college $27,000.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes? Is this Dr.?
Yeah, this is Dave Lindstrom.
Yes.
I will be supporting the original motion and not the substitute motion.
Okay. We're, we're voting on the substitute motion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. We probably need it. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The substitute motion fails. We're back on the original motion. The original motion is the original recommendation from the Management Committee for discussion on that motion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? And motion passes. Moving on to the next recommendation from the Management Committee.
Our final recommendation has to do with the printing for continuing education catalogs. You can find that information on page 13 and 14. This is a second renewal year of a four-year option. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract for the printing of continuing education catalogs with Henry Wurst, Inc., at a total annual expenditure not to exceed $235,000, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Has been a motion and a second discussion? Without discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Same sign?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Dr. Cook. We now move on to the President's Recommendations for Action and the Treasurer's Report. Trustee Cross.
Yes, Madam Chair. Let me pull that up. The Board Packet contains the Treasurer's Report for the month ended August 31st, 2017, and some items of note include, page one of the Treasurer's Report is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund Summary. August was the second month of the college's 2017-2018 fiscal year. State Credit Hour operating grant payments of $10.3 million were received during August and recorded in the General and Post-Secondary Technical Education Funds. An ad valorem tax distribution of $4.6 million was received from the Johnson County, from Johnson County in September and will be reflected in next month's report. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of August 31st, 2017, in all funds was $100.8 million, which is approximately $13.9 million higher than at the same time last year. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits, and it is therefore, Madam Chair, the recommendation of the college administration. The Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended August 31st, 2017, subject to audit.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion, questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Do we have anything further?
That concludes my report.
We move to monthly report from, to the board from Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Vice Chair Sharp. I wasn't going to say much tonight, but I am going to speak a little bit about Concurrent, because all of a sudden Concurrent is a hot issue across the state. Yesterday, Dr. McLeod, Dr. Moplin, and I attended our second panel, a panel, I guess you could say an inquiry, conducted by members of the Kansas Board of Regents and the State Department of Education. Dick alluded to this earlier. The objective here, and this, and this does have legislative traction, I can tell you, is to provide greater accessibility and affordability to concurrent education across the state. The legislature is big on to this, as well as both of those educational oversight bodies because of what it can do. There's a strong belief that when a student can take one course in Concurrent, it has, we have a better chance of getting them engaged and going to school. So this is, this is a train that's on the track, and it's moving pretty fast. I would like to commend Dr. McLeod for his informal testimony yesterday. They were still talking about that today as Mickey lectured them on higher education and the way, what was your, your speech yesterday?
The differences between university and community college and the ranking systems that provide stability to the educational system of higher ed and put teeth into a degree.
Yeah, it was outstanding, and they were, we were discussing this, that today. Over the past couple of weeks, Dr. McLeod and Dr. Weber and I have visited every school superintendent and their associates who work with Concurrent. Those, I can't share with you the enthusiasm that these superintendents have, obviously for what they do, but the incredible amount of effort that's happening on the K through 12. We, for those that had newer facilities, for example, like Shawna 12. We, for those that had newer facilities, for example, like Shawnee Mission, and yesterday we got to tour the, the new current tech facility at Gardner Edgerton, which is fantastic, and their new culinary kitchen. They are so excited about the opportunities they're going to be able to provide their students. Lastly, I would like to thank everyone who turned out here tonight. The beauty of working on a college campus is that people can come to meetings like this and voice their points of view. And that is what makes this community so strong. And obviously, there is great passion behind this issue. With so much passion, the odds of eventual success and living up to process are good. So again, on behalf of the administration, the cabinet, thank you for being here this evening.
That's all. All right. We have nothing on our new business, or sorry, old business. New business, Mr. Clayton.
Thank you for the opportunity to present to you the new strategic plan and the hard work over the past year that has gone on by this campus community. So tonight, I'm going to present to you for your review, the 2017, 2020 strategic plan and new key performance indicators. If you remember correctly, we went into detail about this at the Board of Trustees retreat. So you've understood, or seen all the behind the scenes stuff that's happened. I just wanted to do a formal presentation here so that we start the process of getting this approved. This was a collaborative effort of over 200 campus faculty, staff, students, and administration. Through the use of the environmental scanning process, SWAT, and evaluation of campus data and needs, five institutional priorities that you see here are being proposed and were developed. These five institutional priorities will help the, guide the institution for success into the future. Multiple strategies have been developed to assist with focusing the college in addressing these priorities. And we'll see those as we go forward here tonight. I'm just going to briefly walk through each one of these. First one is academic excellence. You can see the three strategies there. Academic excellence is focused on keeping the college relevant and is one of the more critical components to, to the college's success. This priority will assist us in meeting the needs of students and the community through providing appropriate programs and assistance to students while maintaining rigor in the course room. Institutional priority two, which is focused around student success. This has been focused on to ensure that programs and services are aligned to help students meet their educational needs and that, and goals here while they're here at the college. The college seeks to identify and develop a pathway for success for each student, whether they be credit or non-credit, whether they be career or transfer. Institutional priority three is focused around employee engagement. Get my right sheet here. This critical component for the college and people, and value that people are a valuable resource to the college. The college is committed to hiring and developing strong leaders to create a positive difference for students and the community in which we serve. Institutional priority three, which is looking at community engagement. We strive to be local leaders, regional leaders, national leaders, and even international here at the college. We want to provide great experiences for our community. We also look to support the local economy by providing the fuel for the local economic engine. That fuel is an educated workforce and a, a strong, and strong students. The last one is focused on keeping the college relevant and making sure that we use the tax We want to make sure that we're keeping appropriate facilities and that we're using, taking a holistic approach to sustainability and operational efficiency. With this new plan, we need to take the opportunity to review our key performance indicators or KPIs. These metrics will guide the institution forward and ensure that faculty, staff, cabinet, the Board of Trustees, and our community are achieving the mission of Johnson County Community College. If you notice here on the KPIs, each one of those are lined underneath those institutional priorities and which one those are, are measuring. This is the new strategic plans we go forward. This is an opportunity for you guys to, to look at this and see this. If you'll notice on the sheets there in front of you, trustee Ingram, we took your suggestion about looking at that community diversity, and we've actually changed that to community inclusion and really strengthened the wording around that to talk about how we value diverse thoughts and ideas and, and people within our community, want to bring them together to create a more unified community. So we, we took that feedback from the trustees retreat and, and incorporated into the new plan. At this point in time, are there any questions for present, on the, on the content?
I would just say although you, you have given me credit, it's not really mine to take credit for. So I would just suggest that when we had our first meetings at the beginning of the year, that was just the overall theme that I felt like if, if we really believed it, then we needed to move forward with it. So, you know, although you suggest that, it's a team effort.
Absolutely, absolutely. I just, you know, cabinet heard what you were, your feedback that you provided to us when we were, we took that and incorporated it in.
And I know.
Yep.
Thank you, Vice Chair Sharp. Well, we, we had a detail at our retreat, and I appreciated that. In light of what's happened in the last month and in terms of the testimony this evening, I'm, I'm really looking forward to goal three on employment engagement and how as we, a collective community, work together as to what is the right engagement and the proper decisions. I would hope that we always think of the student first, I'll be a student advocate. And like, like I said earlier, maybe our collective best isn't good enough. So I'm looking forward to that. And I really appreciate how we've built the strategic plan on our previous strategic plan. There are some components that we had, and now we're, we're revising it. And I, I thought Sherri Barrett made a great comment in our retreat when she said that when we, when we're dealing with the Higher Learning Commission, it's, it's a process that you go through. You make a decision and then hopefully you review that decision for improvement. So I, I see this as an improved model based upon where we've been. So thank you.
John, how are these KPIs different than what we've been using?
There are, some of them are actually the same. So if you notice up there, we see graduation and transfer, full and part-time. You'll see award attainment, the number of degrees we've awarded. Some of the pieces that we've added were actually including some of the non-credit majors where in the past those were, were not included. So that whole section of the college, there was really very few KPIs around that section of the college. And so now we're starting to include those in with the, with the KPIs. One of the new metrics is actually the quantum workplace, which is looking at our employee engagement. So those are, those are three metrics on there that the faculty and staff and administrators that took the employee engagement survey identified as areas in which we need to focus. And so the institution has, has put that as part of our KPI. So if we're measuring it, we're, it's something we're going to get our attention. It's something we're going to focus on. Always have to have student satisfaction. That's one that's carried over, which is the Noel Levitz SSI. A new one on there is course completion. This is going towards that academic excellence. We assume that a student that enrolls in a course wants to complete that course. And so that's something that we hadn't measured in the past. And so we're actually going to move forward with that as a key performance indicator. A new metric that we're working on is the community perception survey. This is something where we're going to be surveying the, the community around the campus and saying, what's your perception of us? What's, what, what should we be valuing and looking for there? So that's, that's something that's a new metric that moving forward. Something that wasn't a metric before, but something we always talk about, whether it's in cabinet, whether it's Board of Trustees, whether it's in any of the Board of Trustees committees is what's our enrollment. It's something that we have to have as an institution to be sustained. But yet it's not a, you know, it's something we had never really measured before in the past as far as part of our KPI. And then a new one is the, is the composite financial indicator. Something that we've always tracked with the Higher Learning Commission. They monitor that on us, but it's something we hadn't tracked as a KPI. But it was a metric that was tracked internally. So. Can I answer your question, Dr. Sobchak?
Trustee Cross?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Didn't, I'm not saying we pioneered these metrics exactly, but didn't we help pioneer these metrics nationally?
Um, what do you mean by pioneer?
I don't know what I pioneered. Didn't we invent them?
Really didn't invent them. A lot of these are ones that are, are used by other institutions. Like the Noel Levitz Student Satisfaction Inventory, all those satisfaction metrics are a national survey that we participate in. So I wouldn't want to say we pioneered them, but we've, we're definitely putting them out forefront for the college to, to focus on.
I think they've been useful over the last, my four years on the board. I reserve this comment for, you know, special and rare occasions. And I think you see here tonight, we don't always agree. But I called Dr. Sobchak Billy Bean one time in his review, I think, last year in the 2016 executive session. I hope that's appropriate, Tanya, for me to say what I said in the executive session. But I thought it was a creative way for us to be able to walk around or more accurately drive around in Kansas and, and talk to people and explain what it is we do in higher education because we had some legislators, perhaps justifiably, asking what, what is it we're spending money on. And this was a useful way to begin pushing back, I think, to explain what it is that we do, what, what our transfer rates are, what successes mean, crack the joke, Barack Obama accounts as a negative statistic for Occidental College, you know, and then move on to say, look, here's what we're doing, very systematically. And I appreciate it. And I think it's been a wonderful tool. And I just want to say something positive.
Much appreciated, trustee Cross. But maybe perhaps for folks, you could elaborate on exactly who Billy Bean is.
Billy Bean is now the Executive Vice President of Baseball Operations for the Oakland Athletics, formerly the General Manager for the Oakland Athletics. And I guess now the Cleveland Indians have eclipsed them for the longest winning streak in the history of Major League Baseball, though some claim it's the Giants, but they had a tie way back when. And so nevertheless, Billy Bean helped bring to the fore sabermetrics and search for new baseball knowledge. And you, sir, have done a remarkable job these last four years. We haven't always agreed.
And who, yes, true. And who was the actor that portrayed Billy Bean in the movie Moneyball?
I'm glad you asked. It was a gentleman from Missouri, from southwest Missouri named Brad Pitt.
There you go. Thank you.
Now you have all kinds of information you never needed to know.
I think that's not true.
Are you?
I'm done.
Further comments? Thank you, Mr. Clayton. Reports from board liaisons and the Faculty Association, Dr. Arjo.
Thank you as always for the opportunity to address the board and the administration. Interesting evening. It's been an interesting and seemingly interminable month. We've actually had two FA meetings since the last time I spoke here. One, the very beginning of the month, and just one right before this meeting. The Accuplacer test and all of that occupied our attention for both those meetings. In between those two meetings, there were two at a fair meetings and a faculty senate meeting, which were also dominated by this topic to a large extent. So while you might be asking what I could possibly add to what has already been said, and it's a good question, I do feel compelled, and in fact, I was charged to say a bit more. So if you could sit through just a little bit more about this. From the beginning, I saw, and I think the FA's position has been, there was three issues raised here. One, the nature of the decision, the way it came about. Second, the state of affairs that created specifically vis a vis our accrediting bodies, compliance with our own course descriptions and so on. And then lastly, what are we going to do going forward? I think after all the dust is settled, yes?
What was the first issue?
The nature of the decision and how it came about. So by now, I think when all the dust has settled, I see a fair amount of agreement on all three. I'm not going to belabor any of them in particular, because I think my colleagues who came here today, I think the three statements that have been issued by the faculty bodies of various sorts speak to all of them in quite a bit of detail. I do want to say a little bit about the second two in particular. I do think it's critical, and I take there has been a commitment that the current situation is not tenable for the long term. We do need to find out a way to get back in compliance with our accrediting bodies and our own course descriptions. And I take that there's been a commitment that that process will include very involved in working with the math faculty and other relevant bodies. So this is something we will have to work on going forward. We intend to be watching and in hearing and talking to the math department about how things are going. And hopefully, by the time we get to the end of the, the next semester, we'll be in a very good place. I also want to say something a little bit about the collegial steering meeting. I was there, and a lot of that meeting was taken up by a very detailed presentation by Professor Beth Edmonds, the Chair of the Math Department, explaining in a great bit of detail how the scores were set for the placement test to cut scores, the process by which that happens, the way the math department sees the importance of these tests to make sure that they do not end up with students in classes that are, they don't belong in and are set up to fail and so on. It was an impressive presentation. And in light of trustee's muzal's remark about some of the more emotional, perhaps petrolic remarks have been made, I hope we do not lose sight of the fact that the faculty has on numerous occasions made very substantial reasoned arguments and presentations about our concerns and our position. And if I could say a little bit about the vitriol itself. You might have gathered from my tenure as FA president, it's not really my style. I prefer philosophy, more reasoned discourse. Yes.
What do you mean by vitriol?
Strong language.
Negative in tone?
Negative, hypercritical, that kind of stuff. Again, that's not really my style. I prefer if there are problems to remain as calm and civil as we can and work things out. But I do think we should take that to be a sign of feelings born out of genuine values and commitments to the students and to high academic standards. And I would add that you don't get mad at people from who you expect little. You get mad at people who, from who you expect quite a bit. And I think a lot of what you saw tonight and in some of those statements where the rhetoric perhaps to some people's taste was a bit high, you saw frustration born out of what was seen as a lost opportunity for the faculty and the administration to work together to resolve a serious problem and a hope really that in the future that could be avoided. And so while I understand some of the frustration at that language, there's many things said about me over the last half a month, as a matter of fact, I think we do need to ultimately look for the places where we do see agreements, acknowledge disagreements openly, as Dr. Cook has often said, we should not be afraid to do so. And, you know, get down, at this point, get down to the work, and it's going to be a lot of work to fix things and make sure this doesn't happen again.
True. Thank you, Dr. Arjo. We now move to a report from the Johnson County Educational Research Triangle, which, Dave, are you going to give that report or is Henry going to give the report?
Henry.
Henry will do that, please.
Okay. Well, I know that you were on the line. I wasn't sure if you were going to be on the line.
I was speaking for you, Dave.
I'm driving, I'm driving right now.
Okay, then you don't need to give the report. Trustee Sandate.
Please keep your eyes on the road, trustee Lindstrom. Thank you, Madam Chair. As a reminder, the Johnson County Education Research Triangle was created in 2008. The county's voters supported a one-eighth cent sales tax. Today, the tax generates more than $17 million annually to advance academic research and business endeavors as its partners' organizations, such as K-State, Holy The Campus, the KU Edwards Campus, KU Clinical Research Center. The JESert Board last met on Monday, April 10th. Sales tax revenues for the month of September were $1,490,123, slightly down 0.87 percent with three months left in 2017. Revenues for the year are trending more than 2% positive. For more information, visit www.jucotriangle.com and follow us on Facebook and Twitter. That concludes my report.
No comments, questions? Thank you, trustee Sandate. We move to the Kansas Association of Community College trustees. Trustee Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Didn't, I'm not saying we pioneered these metrics exactly, Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no report.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Okay.
It's a rare moment.
The first time for everything. I'm a little speechless.
I am, too.
No comments from the peanut gallery.
Test the judges.
The Foundation report. Trustee Ingram.
I do have a report this evening. A crowd of over 100 attended the Foundation's annual dinner, which was held this past Tuesday on the Yardley Hall stage. Highlights included the presentation of the Foundation's colleague award to Tanya Wilson for her assistance with the JC3 innovations in the safe finger stick. The Open Pedal Award was given to Pat and Beth McCowen for their years of leadership and service in our community, and the Hugh W. Spear Award for distinguished service went to Bob Renear on the 10th anniversary of the Renear Center for his many years of outstanding leadership to the Foundation. It was also announced that for the 2016-2017 academic year, the Community Colleges Foundation, working with the college's financial aid office, awarded nearly $1.2 million to assist 1,121 of our students with tuition, books, and program needs. This is the highest amount ever awarded in the history of the Community Colleges Foundation. This past Sunday, over 200 people gathered on campus for the annual Lace Up for Learning 5K Run. The event raised over $5,000 for Johnson County Community College student scholarships. I do have one calendar reminder, which includes Summit Enchanted Evening, which will be November the 11th, and we will report the final fundraising numbers at next month's meeting. I would like to acknowledge Kate Allen and her staff. The handout that you provided at the dinner the other night was full of record-breaking information, awards, scholarship dollars that are given to our students, so please share with your staff how much we appreciate all the hard work and certainly want to thank our donors for their support for the college as well. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Ingram. I also wanted to point out Clinton Britton Robinson are the chairs this year for Summit Enchanted Evening, and thank them for their time, as well as congratulate Mark Gilman, who'll be recognized as Johnson County in of the year for this year. And the Board will now consider the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes a number of routine consensus items that are typically considered collectively and approved in a single motion and vote. Any member of the Board may request that a particular item be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered debated and voted upon separately. Are there any items any Board member would like to remove, discuss, or comment on from the Consent Agenda and consider it as a separate item? I just wanted to comment on, I saw Yvonne DeMaranville's retirement in there, and I know we'll talk about this probably later in the year when she's here, but I know that she will be missed as an integral part of the administration. Wanted to recognize, I saw her name. So if I have no other comments, do I hear a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as printed?
So moved.
Sorry.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. And now, I, let's see, I have this script. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing a legal matter with legal counsel pursuant to the Kansas Open Meetings Act exception relating to matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. The session will last 20 minutes, and we will resume the open meeting in this same location. No action will be taken during this session. We would like to invite the following members to join us. Joe Sobchak, Barbara Larson, Becky Scentliver, Tanya Wilson, and Mary Nero to join the executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Sorry.
Motion second. Discussion, all in favor?
What time will we start, and what time will we come out?
We will start at, do you guys need a break? Let's start at 7 o'clock to return at 7:20.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We need a little more time in executive session, and I would like to entertain a motion for an additional 20 minutes. We will resume the open meeting in the same location. No action will be taken during this session. I'd like to invite Joe Sobchak, Barbara Larson, Becky Scentliver, Tanya Wilson, and Mary Nero to join this executive session. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion passes. We'll be back at 7:40, and we'll see you then. Thank you, we are back. No action was taken at 7:35. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.